Will everybody please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Madam Clerk, can you please call roll?
With pleasure, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Gothols.
Here.
Councilmember Papin?
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bonilla?
Here.
And Mayor Rodriguez?
Here. Thank you. Due to the health orders in place currently, we are holding meetings remotely. Information on how to provide public comment is explained at the bottom of each published agenda. When public comment is announced for the item you wish to comment on, when signed into Zoom, use the raise your hand feature and you will be called upon at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press star nine and raise your hand. And when called upon, please press star six to unmute yourself. These options will remain open until I close public comment for that specific item. Madam Clerk, can you please read off the consent calendar?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item number one, City Council Meeting Minutes Approval. Item number two, Ordinance Adoption Municipal Code Cleanup Amendments. Item number three, Ordinance Adoption Mandatory Organic Waste Disposal Reduction. Item number four, Remote Teleconference City Council and Commission Meetings Reauthorization. Item number five, County of San Mateo Edible Food Recovery Program Senate Bill 1383 Memorandum of Understanding. Item number six, South Bayside Waste Management Authority Program Management, Senate Bill 1383 Memorandum of Understanding. Item number seven, Private Development and Right-of-Way Support Services Amendment. Item number eight, School Zone Speed Reduction. Item number nine, Public Works Bulk Mailing and Printing Amendment. Item number 10, Main Street Garage Repairs Agreement. Item number 11, General Plan Subcommittee Composition and Vacancy Process as amended. Item number 12, Year-end Financial Reports for the Fiscal Year Ended June 30, 2021 Acceptance. Item number 13, San Mateo Local Hazard Mitigation Plan Approval. Item number 14, Per Diem Employee Medical Coverage Amendment. Item number 15, Excess Workers Compensation Insurance 2022 Purchase. Item number 16, Crystal Springs Cross-Country Course Letter of Support. Item number 17, Property Tax in Lieu of Vehicle License Fee Shortfall Letter of Support. And finally, item number 18, National Opioid Litigation and Settlement Agreements Participation Authorization.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there any member of the council who would like to pull an item from the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none. If any member from the public wishes to comment on any consent calendar item, now would be the time to raise your hand, and this is for the consent calendar only.
Mr. Mayor, I do have one hand raised, but that hand has been raised. Who just want to check in?
Okay, let's check in with Mary. Um, did you?
I unmuted her, yes.
Okay. I'm still seeing her as muted.
She has to mute herself.
Well.
My guess is if we come back to her under public comment, that that's really where she wants to comment.
Okay, great. So I will entertain the motion. I'll close public comment and entertain the motion.
Mr. Mayor, go ahead. Assistant Attorney.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, if I may, I believe Deputy Mayor Bonilla had something to mention regarding one of the items on the consent calendar.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did not see that. Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
I think the item that I was considering was item 11, and it's actually been corrected.
Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, this about your recusal for the school zones?
Oh, that's true, yes. Okay, there is the item which refers to the safe streets. And I'm sorry, I'm at a loss for which item that is. I'm looking right now. School Zone Speed Reduction, item eight. Because I live within 500 feet of an affected street and I own the home I live in, I will need to recuse myself from this item. Thank you very much. I am going to vote for everything except that item when I vote. Thank you.
Okay, so, Pesana, do we need to vote on everything separately in two rounds?
No, it can be all in one vote. And Deputy Mayor Bonilla can vote on the entire consent calendar, but he will simply be recorded as abstaining on item eight.
Great, thank you. We'll entertain the motion now.
May I make motion to approve the consent calendar?
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you please call roll?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Deputy Mayor Bonilla?
Aye.
Councilmember Gothols?
Aye.
Councilmember Papin?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
And Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move on to public comment now. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the City Council at this time. State law prevents council from taking action on any matter not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. Public comment is limited to a total of 15 minutes. However, an opportunity for additional public comment may be provided later in the agenda. So now would be the time to raise your hand if you wish to speak.
And Mr. Mayor, I still have Mary Webb's hand up. And Mary, if you could unmute yourself and go ahead and give your testimony?
It looks like Mary has re-muted herself.
While she works on her technology, perhaps we could go ahead to the next speaker, Ryanne Motashami.
Good evening, City Council. I wanted to thank you for your efforts throughout this year, over this challenging year. You have navigated a transition to district elections, adapted to and progressed through the COVID pandemic, experimented with safer streets while redesigning other streets to be safer, worked to reduce speeds around schools, and advanced the housing element update process, among many other very noble causes. In a world with so many different priorities for so many different people, I just wanted to thank you for your efforts to make San Mateo a safer and more equitable place. It is not easy to move everything forward all the time. So I would, again, would just like to commend you and talk about some efforts that I certainly hope to see redoubled next year, including transit, bicycle, and pedestrian infrastructure, and also especially, which was the reason I came to speak to you today, studying and considering renter protections in San Mateo. Eviction is a traumatic, damaging experience that has been exacerbated by the COVID pandemic. While the state and federal governments have sought to intervene, we have seen issues with distributing aid, and it hasn't gotten to everyone who really needs it. And it's an experience that I hope no one has to experience. And I think as a city, we should be doing everything we can to combat that. So that's all I had to say. I just wanted to say thank you at this City Council meeting to all of you. Congratulations to all council members, to Vice Mayor Bonilla, and Mayor Rodriguez for executing your specific duties within the City Council this year. And yes, thank you so much.
And Mr. Mayor, it looks like Mary is ready to provide her comments.
Great, thank you. Go ahead, Mary.
I'm sorry, I have nothing to say. My buttons keep appearing incorrectly.
No worries, it happens. So if that's all the speakers, then I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. Okay. And before we move on in our agenda, I would just like to take a couple moments to acknowledge the passing of one of our senior commissioners, Irene Bluth. Here are some thoughts to honor her memory. After working a full career as CFO with San Mateo Community College and volunteering at the Fioli, where she served as Vice President and President, Irene started volunteering at the San Mateo Senior Center in 2004 at the young age of 77. Irene was a vital part of the front desk operation of the Senior Center, greeting patrons, answering phones, processing registrations, and providing valuable information to all who inquired. Irene was a lifesaver on many occasions, always willing to work an extra shift, sometimes a few shifts per week. In 2015, Irene was appointed by the City Council to the city's Senior Citizens Commission, where she served as Vice Chairperson and Chairperson for many years. During the pandemic, she helped with picking up and delivering lunches to other seniors who were unable to leave their homes. Up until this past October, Irene was responsible for writing birthday greetings for all of our senior members and volunteers each month. Irene was always thinking of others, of what she could do to help out. Her commitment to the community was evident to all who knew her. She was an asset to the Senior Center, and she will be deeply missed by all. If you could just please join me in a brief moment of silence in her honor. Thank you. Okay, so now we're moving on to the special ceremonial business. I believe that at some point, I am supposed to relinquish the gavel and hand it over to, who I believe might be the, or hand it over to Deputy Mayor Rick Bonilla. And I'm going to do that right now at this point in the evening. So, handed down. And I'm going to hand things over to Deputy Mayor Bonilla right now.
Thank you very much, Mayor Rodriguez. And thank you all to members of the City of San Mateo for attending this meeting tonight. It's kind of the high point of the year when we have our rotation, as is our tradition. So I want to read a presentation that the council is going to be giving to Mayor Rodriguez, and it's a resolution, number C5, commending Eric Rodriguez for his first term as Mayor of the City of San Mateo, I'm going to read. So, resolved by the City Council of the City of San Mateo, California, that Eric Rodriguez has served the citizens of San Mateo as a highly regarded member of the City Council since 2017, and has completed his first stint as mayor from December 2020 to December 2021, in a year that presented many unique challenges due to the ongoing impacts, impacts plural, from the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas Eric's year began with the first-ever totally virtual State of the City address titled "Resilience on the Path to Recovery", in which his own son Tyler proudly participated in leading the Pledge of Allegiance, Eric went on to inspire us by focusing on the importance of individual and community resilience to pave the way to recovery from the pandemic, defining that a resilient community is one that acknowledges our losses and limitations, but also acts at the individual and collective level to restore and improve quality of life throughout the community, coming together to support families, small businesses, neighbors, and most especially, our most vulnerable residents. And whereas, he presided over a city council that ensured that the pandemic was not the only fact of life, but also that the city's long-term vision continued to lead decision-making, infrastructure projects moved forward, opportunities for success in businesses were addressed, and community interests were heard and respected as we began slowly to evolve out of the lockdown, new normal back to some version of in-person new normal, where we are today. And whereas, the business of the city went on, with Eric skillfully presiding over 21 regular meetings, with 371 items heard and dispatched, and with an additional 30 special meetings conducted to continue to meet the city's needs. Additionally, he conducted nine recruitments for 11 commission openings, which included interviewing 52 candidates, and he also presided over and managed the process of hiring of the city's first new city attorney in 19 years. And whereas, in his leadership, he demonstrated great composure and equanimity under the pressure of the biggest change in the city's election history, with the move from at-large elections to by-district elections, ensuring a respected process that solicited great input and engagement from the community, thoughtful and civil discussions throughout the public hearings, and a decisive outcome in the San Mateo Way with his suggestion of a now-famous coin toss. And whereas, some of the many accomplishments of this year included continuing to assist the businesses and residents in recovery with street closures to allow for outside dining, rent forbearance, and large grocery store workers hazard pay. And a takeaway from the pandemic was that we learned that this community really liked reclaiming streets for pedestrian use. And so a pedestrian mall was established on B Street with plans to create a permanent festive outdoor gathering space with San Mateo ambiance to encourage family and community togetherness. And whereas, major development and housing projects were approved, including 123 Waters Park Residential Project and the all-affordable Kikku Crossing Housing Project, as well as consideration of legislation to help with housing needs with the study of accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units, and great community interest in the discussions around the housing element for the general plan and state housing legislation. And whereas, the city found much to celebrate with Eric conducting the return to in-person ribbon cuttings, including the long-awaited and much-anticipated grade separation project in which the train tracks were elevated, making above-grade crossings at 25th, 28th, and 31st avenues, which has allowed for better east-west traffic flow in the city, as well as the opening of the new Fire Station 25, and most importantly, the return of some greatly missed in-person events with the Central Park Music Series, the Fire Department's Chili Cookoff, Movies in the Park, and a celebration of our board and commission volunteers with an '80s-themed get-together after a two-year hiatus. And now, therefore, the City Council does hereby formally extend its deepest appreciation for the commitment, dedication, deft leadership, and heartfelt public service given by Eric Rodriguez, in which all of the San Mateo community benefited from his modeling of poised under pressure, keen attention to protecting the governance process, light touch with the gavel, and with his special laugh and sense of joy leading us to a return to normal state, adopted on the sixth day of December 2021 by Rick Bonilla, Deputy Mayor, and Councilmembers Gothols, Papin, and Lee. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Rick. Thank you, City Council.
And there it is. So thank you, Eric. I want to invite council members, if they would like to express any appreciation to Eric for his service over this year.
I'd like to kick things off.
Please.
Well, Mayor Rodriguez, outgoing Mayor Rodriguez, I want to thank you so much for your service to the city. There were a couple of things that were many standouts for me. And, well, there were many standouts, and there were a couple that I wanted to mention. And there were so many times where I felt like you elevated the conversation and had really great and insightful questions that helped us move decisions forward. But there were practices that you committed to that really, I think, showed the kind of leadership that you bring to the council and to this community. And I wanted to highlight that you made a commitment to the city, to, in our community, to visit every single neighborhood and visit with every single neighborhood association. And I think that that is, that's a real testament to the kind of person that you are and the way that you share yourself with all members of our community. And I hope that everyone on this call and everyone, you know, who hears this meeting and is listening in knows that all of that additional time and work and effort is in addition to all of the things that we do on council. And so it is truly above and beyond, but I think that it actually does set a really important standard. And then another thing that you did that really meant a lot to me personally is I feel that there were a number of times that you took a very collaborative approach, and you sought opportunities to bring all of us into different, you know, different events or different roles to represent the city, and I really appreciate that. I feel in many ways that you've been in tune with our strengths on the council, as council members, as individuals, and that you created a way for us to utilize and apply those strengths to serve the city. And I think that's really to your credit. And so I really appreciate the chance to work with you and continue working with you. And we are all very indebted to your leadership. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. You muted, Rick.
I apologize for being muted. Who was next? Was it Diana or Joan? Diana, go ahead.
Well, that was a tough act to follow. Well said, Councilmember Lee. And I really do concur. You did draw on the strengths of each of us as council members, and you served with a lot of equanimity, which was mentioned in the resolution. And then I also would like to say that, given that this was a time of COVID, that resolution is a testament to the fact that you got a lot done under COVID circumstances, and a lot was covered, and it seems like we didn't miss a beat on a lot of things. So I'm very grateful for your dedication. I know it was a long year, Eric, but I really appreciate that you were willing to give it 120%, even when you might have been running on 90%. So it is much appreciated because, as we saw or heard in the resolution, so much was accomplished this year, not the least of which, of course, was district elections. And I really think that the way that the meetings were run, you really helped set the bar very, very high for a process that was fair, comprehensive, and was the best that it could have been. So thank you. Thank you for all the time you gave us, not only us as individual council members, but the residents of the City of San Mateo.
Councilmember Gothols?
Thank you, Rick. Eric, I remember your service as a planning commissioner and your participation in neighborhood associations and your connection to the neighborhoods. I think that's, as a mayor, what really raised your level of service. You connected with each of the neighborhoods, and you represent them so well. Your participation in city events always included your family, and it was great to see Tyler out there whenever you got to cut a ribbon, or especially when it was time to ride on a fire truck. That was always a great time. And so you got to enjoy bringing him to playgrounds and different service events. But as was mentioned by the others, these were challenging times, challenging meetings, and you were up to the challenge. It wasn't just COVID. It was redistricting. It was the difficulty of Zoom at times. And again, you were up to every challenge and led us through all of it. Raising a family and juggling work responsibilities is not easy, and all of us know it. And so for us to get to see you doing it this year, I hope you realize how proud we are of you and how challenging we all know that it is. And to see you handle it with such grace was very impressive. You deserve the break you're about to get. It will be a lot easier. You need to, I think you were joking earlier that you were going to start forwarding all the mayor emails to Rick right away. I think you should do that for sure. You deserve it. You deserve it. There were some major infrastructure projects and also improvements to our governments. All of those things were great accomplishments in a year that was particularly challenging. You brought your special talents, your background. Your background in business was particularly helpful for us. You always ask the great question that leads us further down the road and moves us toward a better solution, and that is one of the great things about you. But most important is why you do it. You do it for Shirley and Tyler, for the future of San Mateo, for the future generations of kids who will get to enjoy San Mateo's parks, who will get to enjoy San Mateo's infrastructure. And they may take it for granted, but you put the planning in and the funding strategies, and it's there because of the work that you put in, and you will always and should always be proud of that. And that is what made you a great mayor, and for that, we all say, we all say, thank you very much for a great year as Mayor, Eric. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Here, I'm muted.
There we go. Thank you, Mayor. I want to add some final comments, even though most, everything has been said after I read that extra-lengthy resolution. But I want to say that I really appreciate the fact that you did bring a very steady hand throughout this difficult year, while, all the while, taking care of your own personal, your business. And I just appreciate it deeply. Your external assignments, you paid attention to. And those are, you know, some additional things that council members take care of that a lot of the residents of the city don't know about. We all do, but Eric was on his as the mayor and as the businessman, as the father, the family man. So thank you for all of that. Thank you. Okay, next item of business here tonight. We understand that there is a gift that the outgoing mayor received from the city tonight. Oh, look at that. Magically appears. Can you tell us what those things are, Mr. Mayor?
We have a gavel that says, Mayor Eric Rodriguez, City of San Mateo, 2021. Thank you.
There we go.
Do I open this now? Oh, it's the base of the gavel, so I have to open it.
Okay, so that's it.
Thank you. Thank you, Joan. Joan has been at my home for about an hour now waiting, so. Thank you so much.
She brings the magic, Eric.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, I want to make sure that we point out that there's additional public comment.
We are going to take the public comment at the end.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Okay, so back onto our little agenda here. I'm going to announce that the council also has a gift for Mayor Rodriguez and his family. It's a gift card for Pausa, the restaurant on 4th Avenue in downtown San Mateo, so that Eric can treat his family to a nice dinner, express appreciation for all of the missed dinners in this year as mayor. And this has been delivered to his email for his use at the family's convenience. That said, as we know, there are many sacrifices given by the family in your year as mayor, and we want to express our appreciation to Shirley and Tyler for sharing him with us this year. I believe we're going to see a special delivery now. Come on over, family.
She's shy.
Yeah, hi.
And this one's not so shy.
There we go. Well, good.
This is for Tyler.
You noticed.
It's his favorite candy, which is not popular with a lot of others, but what type of candy is it?
Licorice.
Black licorice.
Thank you.
Wow.
All right, that's beautiful. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Patrice. Thank you, Joan. Thank you, your whole team.
Okay, now, Eric, we're going to turn it back over to you so you can offer your remarks.
Offer remarks?
Yes.
Okay, I'll try to keep these very brief, or as brief as I can. You know, when I decided to run for City Council and as I campaigned five years ago, you know, serving as mayor really never entered my mind. And I think it is probably true with most new candidates for City Council. And it was not until that I began serving that I started to realize the special honor it is to serve a year as mayor, how important it is for the mayor to set the right tone and to get the right messages out and to just be a key point of contact for when residents want to share their concerns. And one thing that I think is very interesting about our mayor rotation system is that council members do not get to pick when they're going to be mayor. They don't get to pick the year, nor the issues that the city will face during that year. And the year sort of picked... And the year sort of picks you. And the only thing for certain is that each year-long mayoral term will face its own unique challenges. They all have challenges. And with the pandemic in the backdrop, 2021 will definitely go down as a challenging one, as noted in the very eloquent proclamation. We, just a few of the things that I think we dealt with during this time was dealing with and addressing pandemic-related shortfalls of revenue. Coming together as a community after a very divisive election and restarting our general plan process and getting it back on track and off to another great restart. Improving pedestrian and cyclist safety as the cars return to our streets. And of course, making the single biggest change in our city's 127-year history to how we elect council members. And all that under an incredibly tight timeframe, just to name a few. And the city council, city staff worked on all of these issues in a completely remote setting for the entire year. I'm so proud of all that we accomplished. And I want to emphasize the word "we" because I think the mayor and the city council as a whole often get a disproportional amount of credit for the city's accomplishments. And of course, it is a huge team effort that not only includes the entire city council, but also every member of city staff and our community at large who participates diligently in city governance. But what I think I'm most proud of is not what we accomplished, but it's how we accomplished it. This council, our members of our community and even city staff often have differing opinions on how to best attain our goals. But that is to be expected and even celebrated. And as this year closes, I could say that each council, at each council meeting, we always treated each other with respect, and we came to the meetings with an open mind. And we did conduct the city's business in the San Mateo way. And for this, I want to sincerely thank my colleagues on council, city staff, and of course, the public at large. I know I'm biased, but it's true. San Mateo sets the standard for effective local governance, and we lived up to our own high standards yet again this year. I have already had mayors from nearby cities reach out to me, asking me advice on how their own city can be as successful as we are when they're transitioning to district elections in the upcoming months. And as we look to the year ahead, the first year that our move to district elections will become more and more real. I think the council will face another new big challenge. And that is, how do we continue to make the best decisions for San Mateo as a whole, even though we council members will no longer be elected by the same pool of citywide voters? Successfully navigating this challenge, in my opinion, is going to be one of the keys to ensuring our city's continued effectiveness moving forward. So, I end my term as mayor filled with gratitude. My thanks go out to the San Mateo community for giving me this honor to serve. I want to thank each of my colleagues whom I served with on this council. Thank you for entrusting the mayorship with me this year. And your dedication to our city inspires me every day. And it is definitely a privilege to be a part of such a high-performing team. Lastly, of course, I want to thank my wife Shirley, my son Tyler, and all of my friends and family for the sacrifices they make, day in and day out, allowing me to serve. There is no way I could serve in this office without my wife Shirley's support. What does support mean? It means often doing twice the amount of work around the home as needed to be done before I took office. It means understanding me being away from the family three evenings in a row or accidentally waking her up as I tried to sneak in the bed after a council meeting goes way late overnight. And sometimes it means tolerating me stepping away to call a constituent on a Sunday morning. Thank you so much, Shirley. You deserve a vacation, which I don't know when it'll be coming, but it's going to be coming soon. And I want to thank everyone again. I look forward to working with you all to have even a better 2022.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Okay, well, I think now that we have an opportunity for public comments. Eric, do you want to go ahead and open up for public comment?
Oh, sure. Yeah, I guess I'm still mayor. I would like to open up public comment.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, our first speaker is Charles Stone.
Good evening, colleagues. Eric, I just wanted to call in and thank you very much for a great job as mayor. There was a certain symmetry of a Hillsdale High graduate serving as mayor of Belmont this year, while a graduate of Carlmont served as mayor of San Mateo this year. And I want to make everyone very much aware that Eric is not a sleeper agent from Belmont. He truly cares about San Mateo more than his hometown of Belmont. Eric, you've led with consideration, with collegiality, and with collaboration. You've led through incredibly hard times, and I truly hope that the next time we see you as mayor, that it is on a physical day and that you get the experience of actually running the meetings in person. I do wish that for you. The city of Belmont is grateful for the incredible relationship we have with the city of San Mateo, the wonderful fire department we share. And I wanted to let you know that we are appreciative of everything you did for our sister city. And I appreciate our chats and working with you very much. I look forward to having that relationship continue well into the future. And I also wanted to take a moment and congratulate the incoming mayor. I don't want to jinx anything, so I won't say anyone's name, although I think we probably know who it is. But Eric, truly a job well done in the face of all kinds of obstacles and adversity. I remember speaking to you earlier in the term when you were first starting out and then watching you a few times, and you grew so much as a mayor. And it's wonderful that people are reaching out to you for advice because they should. And with that, I will bid you all a good night and thanks again.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, I know that we've, State Senator Josh Becker has been on the call a lot and I know, a long time, and I know he has a busy schedule this evening. So maybe we can let him have a chance to speak first, and then we'll go back.
I don't see his name, but I do see Nicole.
He, oh, yeah, it says Nicole, right? I'm pretty sure it's Josh. He.
That's me.
Okay.
Go ahead, State Senator Becker.
Excellent. Yeah, I just wanted to join in on the commendation. I'd say Mayor Rodriguez, Eric, you've just become a valued friend and trusted advisor on every issue. And it just, every time I talk to you, you're thoughtful, you're reasoned, you have an incredible point of view, you've thought through the issues. And just getting a chance to watch in the last year, as you tackled, as you said in your remarks, you know, things that were unforeseen through COVID and things that had to be done, like the redistricting, and handled that incredibly smoothly as well as the myriad of other duties of mayor. So I just wanted to extend my congratulations. And the city is lucky to have you. The region's lucky to have you. And I'm lucky to have you as a friend. So just wanted to be here today to say that. Congratulations. But I know how much time you all put in, but I also know how much time when you're the mayor, the extra time it takes in your life. And I know this was a busy year for you. And just join Charles Stone in saying congratulations to our incoming mayor, to incoming Mayor Rick Bonilla and incoming Vice Mayor Diane Pap. And I know you will both do a fantastic job in the years to come as well.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Adam Lorraine.
Good evening, council and staff. This is Adam Lorraine. I happen to be a sustainability and infrastructure commissioner, but I am speaking as a longtime resident of San Mateo tonight.
You just got muted, Adam.
I apologize, Adam. Can you start over?
Yes, of course.
Technical difficulty.
No problem. Hello, good evening, council and staff. This is Adam Lorraine. I happen to be a sustainability and infrastructure commissioner with the city, but I am speaking tonight as a longtime resident of San Mateo, just expressing my gratitude. And congratulations to Mayor Rodriguez and the council and staff for a very productive, as has been noted, 2021. It is interesting to be giving this gratitude via Zoom, but frankly, I'm gratified and I appreciate the opportunity to be with you tonight, having made it through this year together. Mayor Rodriguez, I really appreciated your year of service and felt very well represented as a resident of San Mateo this year by yourself and by the council, by the decisions you all made together. But particularly, of course, I have to, you know, always remember this, among other things, as being the year in which B Street was closed a couple of blocks, and we made kind of a step toward a new San Mateo. And I don't think that would have happened without your support and your prodding and pushing to make it happen. So I'm very grateful for that. I think it's a legacy project. This is indeed a huge year in which the city moved to district elections. So you'll always be remembered from here on out, and it's well deserved. So just wanted to thank you very much for your service and thanks to the council and staff. Good night.
Thank you, Adam. Our next speaker is Lisa Diaz Nash.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I am speaking as a private individual, not in my role as library board trustee. And I would like to thank the entire council for working through a very difficult year, remotely, in person when they can, and really making San Mateo priority for everything involved. But I would like to take a special moment to say thank you to Mayor Rodriguez, who has always been a champion of our neighborhoods. I am on the Baywood Neighborhood Association and a member of the San Mateo United Association. We are trying to represent all of our neighborhoods across San Mateo. And we always found a willing ear in Mayor Rodriguez and a voice to advocate on our behalf. So we thank you for your service. We look forward to continuing to partner with you. And we look forward to partnering with the entire council on the many issues we have to bring our city back, to bring our small businesses back, and to make 2022 a year of positive growth. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I have no other hands raised.
Okay, I'm going to close public comment. Let's see, what's next? Oh, okay, I think that's done. We're done for the evening? I think it is time for our reorganization ceremonial item number 20. And I, let's see, it says, I'm trying to make, I'm trying to make sure we do this right. It says, do we need to take public comment before we?
Mr. Mayor, we are going to take public comment on this item at the end.
Got it. Okay, so we're going to be taking nominations for a mayor. And if I could, I would like to make the nomination. Somebody who always gives the city 100% in everything he does and somebody who was a very outstanding deputy mayor this year, one that I could rely on for any time I could not make anything. He was always a step up, every single time. I would like to go ahead and nominate Deputy Mayor Rick Bonilla for the position as mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Can I get a second? Second.
Okay, thank you, seconders too.
All right, Madam Clerk, can you please call roll?
Mayor Rodriguez.
Yes.
Councilmember Papin?
Yes.
Councilmember Gothols?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bonilla?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 5-0.
Good.
Okay.
Okay. Now it's time to take nominations for the office of the deputy mayor for the city of San Mateo.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, recognizing Councilmember Gothols.
Congratulations, Rick. At this time, I would love to nominate my good friend and council member Diane Papin, but I recognize that you are the mayor, and if you would like to do that. But that is the motion that I would like to make.
Thank you very much for your recommendation. You may go ahead and make that motion.
Thank you. I move that we make Diane Papin the deputy mayor.
Happily second.
Okay, with the motion and the second, Madam Clerk, could we please have a roll comment?
Yes. Councilmember Gothols?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Papin?
Yes.
Mayor Bonilla?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rodriguez? Oh, no, sorry, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes.
I have to redo my sheets.
Okay. Did that pass, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir, 5-0.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, seeing 5-0, we now recognize our new deputy mayor, Diane Papin. And with that said, I think we move on to the second part of our agenda here for tonight. Or at least ceremonial item 20C, which are comments from the incoming mayor, who is me. So I did take the time to write a few comments. I'll have to admit, I think I did it rather early, so my thoughts may not be quite ordinarily as organized as outgoing Mayor Rodriguez's comments. I have a lot to say, though. I'm going to try to say it quickly, and I may skip a few items, just in the interest of brevity. So my thing this year, though, is going to be, and I want to work on it, and you'll hear more about this, past, present, and future. My past with the city goes back to before. I was appointed to Bay Meadows and Transportation Corridor Citizens Advisory Committee in 2001. Actually, I started being very active in the city back in 1995, attending all council meetings, planning commission meetings, making introductions, weighing in on issues, and becoming a person who was eventually known as like the sixth planning commissioner because I was at every single meeting and weighing in on some of the important issues. So when that completed and it was approved by the city council in '05, I shortly moved on to the Public Works Commission in '06, where I served with Councilmember Joe Gothols. I left that position in 2012. But along the way, we worked on, and I'm sure Joe recalls, the bike master plan, the pedestrian master plan, the green streets, which I think eventually became the complete streets plan. We started talking about and working on the 101 in Peninsula Avenue, on and off ramps on the southbound side because Poplar Den was a danger. It still is now. Poplar is a dangerous corridor, even though it improved somewhat. We also started talking then about the wastewater treatment plan, which we now call our clean water program. We had sanitary sewer overflows for which we were cited back in '09. So this is the past, okay, in case you got lost in my comments. But as a result of being cited, we have developed our new, we're building our new billion-dollar project, which is our new wastewater treatment plant, plus 10 miles of upgraded, improved, larger, new pikes in streets, which we call a collective system, and the underground flow equalization system, which is on the back corner of the Event Center lot. In '15, I was appointed to the city council when Robert Ross vacated his seat for his own personal reasons. And at that time, I began working on what I continued working, actually, on what I started working on back in 2001, which was housing. Because back in 2001, what we were looking at at that time was people being displaced, families being separated, younger generations leaving San Mateo to raise their families. Housing shortage is what we had. And Bay Meadows was proposed by a kind of visionary person, Chris Meany, a developer with an idea to build world-class transit rated development in San Mateo on the Caltrain tracks with the train station, moved north and centered actually on that development, which had previously been the horse racing track. And at that time, I also started working in 2014, shortly before I got appointed to the city council, on actually creating Peninsula Clean Energy, which I brought down here from Marin Clean Energy. I brought them with me. They came and talked with county supervisors, Larry Patterson, our then-city manager, other city council members, other city managers. We had a series of steering committee meetings. And now we're, since 2016, well down the path of having our own renewable energy community choice aggregator, which, in case people aren't clear, it purchases clean renewable energy on the open market and displaces dirty energy, which PG&E continues to provide, on the grid. energy, which PG&E continues to provide on the grid. And we do that by making power purchase agreements. We purchase wind, we purchase solar, we purchase biomass, we purchase other things. So it's slipping my mind right now. But that's a great thing. In fact, we not only do all that, but we do it at a 5% discount on the generation as compared to PG&E, and we have a lot of what we call community programs. So since we don't have shareholders, we're able to take the money that PG&E distributes to its shareholders with with their proceeds from the ratepayers and institute these programs. And so things like helping people electrify their house with solar and battery and heat pump water heaters. We help income-qualified people get a home upgrade, where they can have home repairs and efficiency upgrades at no cost. We help cities with reach codes, which San Mateo has taken advantage of in the last couple of cycles, to help us go beyond the building code, as it does with this every couple of years improvements. We have now got to the position where new buildings, new residential buildings, and office buildings require to be fully electrified, which is a great thing, because we all know that we want to do something to meet our climate action plan and the state's goals for climate action. So we also have a not only free refrigerator recycling program, and we do this because refrigerators can be really polluting if we don't treat them properly. You can call Peninsula Clean Energy, they'll have your refrigerator picked up, and they'll pay you $35 to do it for you. So just last week, I had an abandoned refrigerator towed away from a public street in my neighborhood. Public Works Committee picked it up, and I just want to let the people know, don't do that. They'll pay you to come and get it. So please just call Peninsula Clean Energy. EV charging, we're building 3,500 charging stations throughout the county over this year and next year. And used EVs, we're providing help for people to purchase used EVs. We were helping people buy new EVs, but we've got out of that. It turns out what people really need is a chance to get into an EV, those who can't afford it. So income-qualified people can access a used EV at a reasonable price with rebates and with help from PCE. I also serve on the South Bay Side Waste Management Authority, been there for seven years. We collect, we recycle, we dispose all of our waste every week, and we're also converting food waste, which emits a lot of methane from the landfill from the garbage stream. We're processing it, turning it into a biogenic gas, and using it to fuel electricity generation at the wastewater treatment plant in Redwood City. Serve on HART, where we've been helping developers build affordable housing. I'm on commute.org, where we do transportation demand management, including shuttles, bike shares, and bike tracking systems, where we reward bike riders. Member of the California League of Cities Governance Transparency and Labor Relations Committee, been there for four years, I'm the chair this year, and we work on things such as calpers, which is a major issue for the city. We keep our close eye on calpers and make sure that they're looking to do things that are including input, meaningful input, from their clients, which are the cities who pay into this fund. And we also look at legislation as it comes up, and we deal with city and county and other governmental labor issues as they arise. And ABA, the Association of Bay Area Governments, I've been serving there for two years, and working on Plan Bay Area 2050 with the Regional Planning Committee. It's a major thing. We're looking there to improve the environment while also improving housing, transportation, the economy, and providing equity to people who live here in our nine counties. And right now, I'm working on the big picture, which is bringing all of those five legs of that Plan Bay Area stool together, focusing on breaking down the silos that keep those things being done separately and apart from themselves. I want to make sure that it's actually brought together so we can focus on doing all of the important things that need to be done. So I have a lot more to say, but I think I've said probably enough for now. I want to make sure that I am cognizant of the fact that we have renters in this city who are struggling to get by. Mr. Motashemi mentioned it in his public comments. I'm really looking forward to having a discussion coming up on how we can help renters with the issues that continue to face them and cause displacement and still separation of families because younger people are leaving, they can't afford to be here. So general plan update, I look forward to working more on that. The housing element coming up, these are two huge issues that are going to determine for the next 20 years the course of our city's development, and they they deserve really very much public participation. That's really what we need. It's what everybody has been asking for, because we can't do it without the public. We're just five council members. We need public to help us do this. And that said, I also want to work with the business community. When I was the mayor last time, I instituted something called Lunch with the Mayor, and I had several good lunch meetings with, actually with groups of business leaders, and I think that we came up with some interesting ideas, and we were able to move forward with some things. I want to function more closely with the Chamber of Commerce and the Downtown San Mateo Association, because I hang around downtown a lot, and I think I could benefit probably from learning a few things from the people, the businesses that are there, and helping them with some of my comments. Looking forward to Central Park improvements, which are going to be coming forth over a period of time. And last, but not least, the lagoon. The lagoon has been neglected for way too long. I really want to put some heat on and try to get some work going on on the lagoon. That said, those are my comments for here tonight, and I want to thank everybody for selecting me as the mayor this year. I look forward to great cooperation in the spirit of that which we have had this year going forward, though we continue to work on COVID-related issues and under the emergency order, and we're looking at indeed a new variant now. We have high hopes that with so many people vaccinated and with boosters out there now, that we're at least going to be safer health-wise from what otherwise could be disastrous outcomes. So those are pretty much my comments. And that's my speech, and I want to ask one thing. Oh, no, that's all. Yeah, that's pretty much it for me.
That was awesome, Rick.
Thank you all very much.
We're excited for the next year. I think we still have one public commenter.
I see that. Madam Clerk, could we have Noelia Corso, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Noelia, here, you, please feel free to make your comments.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for the time and space. I just want to congratulate our new mayor, Rick Bonilla, for his tireless dedication to our city, and I just wanted to express how much his leadership has really supported all residents, his laser focus on making sure that everyone in our community feels cared about, knows about the resources, and 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 also just, I'd like to say that he has personally been a mentor to me, and I think that's very important in terms of making sure that our newer elected officials have that support and a role model who really brings them in and encourages them to keep learning, keep growing, and really keep serving our community all all as one. I'd also just like to congratulate Deputy Mayor Pappin for her her new role as well, and just wanted to share a little memory I have of her. Back in 2019, North Central had a cleanup day, and I have a very real, a very vivid memory of her coming coming to the event very quietly with her daughter and rolling her sleeves up and really doing the work and cleaning up in the neighborhood, and she was very humble about it, and I just I truly appreciate that kind of leadership, you know, serving the community and, you know, not doing it for the spotlight, but doing it because it's important and it needs to be done. So thank you so much, and I'd also just like to congratulate everyone on behalf of our San Mateo Foster City School Board. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Noelia, for your comments. If I could, council members, for just one minute, I'd like to add something, because Noelia mentioned mentoring. You know, I come from a tradition, a background in building trades where we have apprenticeship, we have journeyman, we have apprentices, and mentoring is a big part of what we do, and I truly believe in it. In fact, actually, right now, I'm mentoring four people, so hoping I can make a difference in helping to bring people along into a local government that can help us move the needle in in a good direction. So with that said, I think we're prepared to adjourn unless anybody has anything else.
And, Mr. Mayor, for the record, there are no other hands raised, so no more public comment.
Thank you very much. Oh, are we prepared to have a toast? Let me see. I am prepared to offer a toast to the San Mateo City Council and all of its members. I don't know if any of you have your your sparkling. Oh, I got sparkling, you probably got wine. But anyway, I just want a toast to the San Mateo City Council and say, may we have many, many, many more great years in our future. Thank you all very much. And with that, we will adjourn with my new gavel. Let's begin the adjourn.